Our economist is going to be here at 1:30 in the afternoon, and it's being almost 11:30 now. We're gonna go to resume session at 11:30. Committee of the whole is in recess. What did I say? I'm sorry. Yeah, he says 11:30. We'll be back at 1:30. 1:30.
All is back in order. We're in section two. We left off last night again. There was a request made for for an economist to field questions from members of the body. We have Dr. Roseanne Jones here this afternoon with us. I want to thank her so much for attending. I do know that Getka, Getka has, I think Gary Hiles hopefully coming in. Fine, okay. But with that, I'll, okay, fine. We last left off, I think, with Senator Pangolino. Senator Pangolino, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I had a amendment to propose, and that's when I had the floor yesterday, or the last time we were convened, so. And then I indicated that with the request for the economists to come in, that we would then suspend, I'd like to just indulge the body and suspend my time for the presentation of some amendments until such time that we have a presentation from the economists.
Oh, fine, okay. Okay, thank you very much, Senator. So again, Senator Tenorio, you recognize?
Just real quick on a procedural motion to go ahead and suspend the five-minute rule and allow for multiple rounds while the economist is here because we know that her time is short. So if that's in order to suspend, relax the rules with respect to the Committee of the whole until we complete our question and answer with the fine gentle lady that's here.
And there would be no objection? If there's no objection? Oh, Senator, Senator Shimizu, yes.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure what, is that a change from what we had decided on earlier to make a change?
Would you like to, Senator, would you like to refer the question to the Senator?
Yeah, yeah, just wanna know what was, what was the structural change?
The effect is that while we're talking with the economist who's here, because there's a short time for her to be here, because she's got duties to attend to as well, for us to suspend the two rounds to allow multiple opportunities for for the members of the legislature ask her questions, dealing with her understanding of the economic questions we are gonna be asking her in regards to the $250 million bond borrowing.
Does that answer your question, Senator?
So you're saying that suspension of the two rounds?
Actually, multiple. We're more relaxed, particular to the questions that'll be, uh, to...
On this deal, okay, yeah, I just wanted to see what is, I gotta redefine prints of what's the difference from. That's how I'm getting a little paranoid.
You have more flexibility, Senator, basically.
But they may change, but just a point of order. So I, when we, when we're discussing my amendment, similar to that of the previous amendments, we had members of the administration up here, and I would like to call a recess until we get all those involved.
We'll take a minute recess.
Revenue tax, but thank you, you're very kind.
That, I'm looking towards members of the bodies, Senator Tenorio, and then Senator... Already, already. Yeah, earlier. Senator Tenorio, yes, already.
Mr. Jones, I just wanted to ask very briefly here. You're aware of the $250 million bond, which is being proposed. There's been a lot of discussion about what the multiplier effect would that have in our economy, and also what impact insofar as revenue would be to the government of Guam if we were to float this bond. And there's another mil, 90 million, possibly just 77 as a result of changes in the financial market, which will also be floating. So can you tell us just on the $250 million, what do you believe the government of Guam may take in in the next year or maybe two years?
Thank you. I can't give you specific numbers as to revenue estimates that the government would collect from $250 million circulating in Guam's economy. That would take a little more analysis. The basis of that analysis would come from, does the money stay here? $250 million coming into Guam's economy, where is it going? If it stays here, and if it's broad-based enough, then you might look at having the $250 million plus half of that circulating initially. In other words, 1.5 multiplier. That means the first go-round, the people who have the money begin to spend the money. If it stays in the economy, then that makes the next round of folks who receive that money gives them an opportunity then to spend it in the economy. What happens with the multiplier is that it fades out, that the first beneficiaries will have the greatest impact, and then as it circulates through the economy, then you see less and less of an economic benefit. But there's still economic benefit. The question that I have about that is, does the money stay here? And usually, the strongest effect of a multiplier is that it's productive here. You see new businesses starting, and then they can produce something, and there's lots of trade domestically, and the domestic market improves. But if, on the other hand, the money leaves island, and we do have a lot of leakages here, and a lot of new companies that are forming here that are ready to take the money and send it back to suppliers and providers off-island, then you may not see that money circulating, staying here, and growing Guam's economy. I think you'll see kind of a positive shock to Guam's economy, and, and not the sustained, long-term revenue from it. And so that's the thing that I'd be worried about.
Do you have any opinions of your own with respect to the proposal that's in front of us for the $250 million bond? You just indicated that there would be, my interpretation would be a spike in economic activity as a result of the $250 million infused into the economy. But do you have any views with respect to paying down these debts with the $250 million bond?
The purest economist would say the golden rule is you finance capital investments, and you don't finance day-to-day operations. That's the golden rule of investing. However, Guam is on the verge of its new economy, my view. And in order to take full effect of Guam's new economy, the past needs to be dealt with. And these issues have been looming for quite some time, about the obligations. And from my point of view, if it's managed correctly, and if it's put to good use, and if the door is closed on this kind of investment, investing in goods and services and day-to-day operations, then Guam may have a chance to get on with the new economy, which I think is very bright indeed. So it's an investment in a, in a different way. You wouldn't do this normally, and in fact, one of the things that I'd look at is saying, ultimately, you have to find the revenue to pay for this debt, this $250 million debt. And the question then becomes, it's going to be some kind of revenue stream from the government of Guam. And is it going to be a pressure on other investments that the government of Guam needs to make? Is it going to be a new stream of revenue? My point here is, at the, at the end of the day, we're talking taxes. We're talking GRT, we're talking some other kind of revenue source. And the question is, are you somehow better, if it comes back to you're gonna have to raise revenue, are you better off dealing with that issue, is it cheaper to deal with that issue straightaway, than to deal with it after the effect and have to pay interest on top of it? So those are the kinds of things that you have to look at. And I think what's really gonna be telling here, and what happens, what helps with a lot of economic activities, the, the market, market analysis, and even the market report says, let's see if this $250 million is marketable.
Let me ask you something. On a policy basis, being an economist, businesses rely on stability, political stability, policy stability as well. In 2003, there was a increase in GRT from 4% to 6%, which met much opposition in the business community, and then it was repealed. Then there was some changes in policy as well in the ensuing years, most immediately in the 29, uh, this 2902 and 2903. And now we're looking at the infusion or the possibility of getting a $250 million loan, which, from what you just said, would mean you have to raise revenues more likely than not in the area of taxes in order to pay for. With the impending prospective military growth and the growth in the economy, is the change in tax policy something that the business community, in your view, or is good for the economy, in your view? Because it's my understanding the business community not just frowns on, but relies heavily on policy being predictable, and not that it's tax, you know, changes on a relatively regular basis. What are your, what are your views on that?
Yeah, I agree. The business community, and, and let's face it, the household community isn't, isn't in favor of taxes. It's not, it's not a good word to any of the groups out there. But you're right about the stability, and the financial markets are also interested in stability. They wanna know that you have a stable stream of revenues coming in to be able to fund this. A lot of people are betting that with the, the new economy, the military buildup, that we don't have to pay so much attention to taxes any longer. I think there's been some, some starts at looking at tax policy here, and I think tax policy needs its own attention and addressing. It would be a shame to kind of have to deal with tax policy on the fly of this, this or any other bond or loan, loan policy. It just kind of confuses the two. So you're right, people do want stability. They want to know that their money is, is returning, is being returned to them in a, in a good way. But generally, I can, I can sympathize with you. People do not like to hear raising taxes.
So my last point, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the time, is then, on the fly or in the face of a potential bond indenture being issued for the payment of this debt, which is not capital-based, most, most systems, most economies and most businesses look to tax policies that are planned out, that are, that are prospective in the long term, and they can foresee rather than on the heels of a, of a bond measure. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, and I think that was the problem with the GRT, the, the ups and downs. People didn't know what they were paying for anymore. You know, the price was, was high because the GRT went up, and then, and then GRT went down. People were saying, well, we're not seeing any, any reduction in the prices. And so it just created sort of a havoc in, in your marketplace. And people, I began, began to believe that they weren't sure what they were paying for any longer. And so I don't think you wanna see that kind of up and down, that spike. You wanna see long-term, consistent, stable growth. And, and that's one of the concerns about the, the $250 million pumping through here. It's all at once and right away, and what's that gonna do to our economy? And also at the time of low interest rates, if you look at what's going on in the US economy, the interest rates are going down. You have $250 million circulating through this economy. Be on the lookout for inflation here. I would expect to see higher prices as you put this much money in, in circulation. Demand is gonna go up. There's only so many goods and services here on the island presently, and people are gonna drive up prices. So it's gonna be an interesting, an interesting time, which that inflation may take away some of the multiplier.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Senator Pangolino?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanna know what, what, with the lockbox provision in this indenture or in this authorization here for the pledge purposes, what does that do? Does that mean that we now have to have the GRT as our tax base for the next 30 years, the term of the bonds, or do we, what, and I guess Getka would probably be the person to answer this. What does it mean for our ability to, to look at new tax policy as we move out over a 30-year period with regards to our, to our island here?
What the, what the credit strength that we are looking for is to ensure there is enough coverage for debt service. So debt service is 20 million. We usually need at least to collect 40 to 60 million, depending on, on what the debt service coverage requirement is. It's normally about 1.25 to 1.75.
Yeah, but that's not the question to ask.
And it, but it does not, it, it does not, I mean, it does not lock in the tax rate as long... Oh, but you're saying if it converts or something like that?
Right.
Okay.
So, so what does that do? I mean, what if we wanted to do, to go to a value-added tax? Or we wanted to go to a sales tax? Or we wanted to lower the GRT and do a combination of personal income tax? How does the indenture, the, the terms and conditions of the bonds affect our ability to do that?
I, I believe, and I, I'd have to confirm this with Stan, but we'd probably have to amend the bond indenture to disclose that and to, and if it's our intent to pledge that as a continuing...
Well, it is our intent, absolutely the intent.
To, to convert the pledge from GRT to the sales tax, then we can amend it, and we'd probably have to do a review again to ensure there's coverage with the new structure.
Or a call of the bonds? Well, I mean, with the new structure, we have no idea of what, 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 what collections we'll have on our taxes. So the bonds become riskier and riskier, and we may have to, they may turn in their bonds, given that the terms and conditions have changed and request that their principal be paid.
Right. And so we'd have to somehow ensure the coverage. If there's no coverage, then there, we'd have to look at the next step.
Yeah. And, and I guess the other thing is, in order to be able to do that, because the primary pledge is the GRT, the secondary pledge, of course, is the general taxing authority of the government, it may change in terms of the, the ratings of the bonds and, and things like that. So there, there's a bit of uncertainty. You know, the, the concern I have is, if we are indeed going to float this, and, and the point I, I heard coming from Dr. Jones was that if we are going to dedicate a funding source to pay for the debt over 30 years, and the uncertainty is such that we may have to, and we can't support that with our current tax structure, current tax rates, current tax collections, that we may need to raise the revenues, raise taxes, in order to ensure that we keep the debt coverage ratios and, and meet all of our other obligations. Because remember, it's, I, I, we do, our primary obligation then is to pay the debt note, and then all the other government needs come after that. So if, in order to, once we pay our debt, we need to do adjustments within our, our government in order to ensure that we're able to continue to meet those obligations, and if we want to provide services or increase services beyond what the revenues we collect, then we'd have, or continue those services, because right now we don't have the revenues to support this, then we would have to then raise taxes. Now, from, from a perspective of, if we are go, if it's almost inevitable, we're not saying it is, if it's inevitable that we're gonna have to raise taxes, why don't we just, and adjust government operations? What do you think, why don't we just lock up GRT, take 20 million or 30 million, you know, a year, and pay off these over the next, you know, 10 years? And save on the interest, and save on 20 years of interest with this bond issue? Because it's one way of doing, or if we are going to raise, raise the tax now to be sure that we can retire this over a shorter period of time and save money so that we don't exhaust all of our ability to make future investments because of the money we're borrowing today? I mean, we're still gonna have to build new schools. We really should take a look at building a new hospital or new clinics, and these kind of issues, that if we exhaust our borrowing capacity, our investment capacity now, that we may be precluded from doing these things, or the only other way to do these things is either see that the growth that we, we expect, or else we supplement it by increasing the tax rates. And I think that these are the questions that, that to me, I continue to, to go over in my mind. But of course, the other thing that, that I hear Dr. Jones is saying is that there is an intrinsic value or a hidden value, maybe you might wanna say, to kinda building this new, new gate between the old and the new economy, that monies can still flow this way, but monies can't, you know, can't flow the other way in order to have us repeat some of the mistakes in the past. And so I understand, you know, that, and I think that these are the considerations that this body must deal with, must face and may be honest about when we try and make our decision on this issue. So I wanna thank you, and I wanna thank you, Dr. Jones, for your presentation.
All right, Senator Cabal?
I just wanna go back to an interesting comment that Dr. Jones mentioned about leakage. And again, the, the number that was brought up earlier was, there was a 1.5 multiplier effect of the $250 million. And of course, two considerations. You, you meant, you, you stated leakage. Which monies stay here and which just go straight out of the island? And you mentioned certain companies that are, are here, that take advantage of the situation with this money. Then they are based in an, outside of the, of, of the territory of Guam, and where these monies go. And then you, you also mentioned the inflationary impact that could dampen some of the, of this multiplier percentage. But I wanna go back on the leakage thing too, just because my experience in, in business, I was, I, I'm, I was at a soft drink company. We made bottled products here, but we, but the canned products, which is the most of the business, 75% of, of our canned, of our total soft drink sales was, at the time I was in, at Pepsi, was canned beverage. The canned beverages were coming out of either Washington or, or Hawaii. The syrup, the concentrate that, for my bottled Pepsi that I man, that, that we manufactured here, came from Cork, Ireland. And of course, we make payments. We make a letter of credit to Cork, Ireland for that concentrate, or make a payment in a check to PepsiCo Beverages out of Hawaii or, or Tacoma, Washington. I'll be straight up, cost of goods, cost of goods is 50% of the price. So you have a lot of products, you have cost of goods, you buy from a manufacturer. I bought from Pepsi, Washington. That was 50% of, of, of the cost of, of this, of that, of the, of the selling price of that product. When I get the money in, I write that check, and that check goes straight to Tacoma, Washington, or again, is sent to Cork, Ireland. The next cost is, you know, transportation costs are pretty heavy. And, and our shipping, with shipping companies, especially for any, if you have a liquid product, such as water, or you have a big, cheap, bulky product such as toilet paper, Pampers, bread, well, if there's, I don't think bread's brought to Guam to bake here, thank goodness. But for, for big, bulky products or heavy products coming in here, you have freight factors that are just as much as the cost of the product. And of course, that's why with, with, with our product, you know, freight factors were pretty high. When, what stuck in Guam from, based on just my little corner of the world, or my, my little corner of the industries, was labor costs. So labor costs can, can run, but you know, some labor costs can run anywhere from 20 to 30% i- if you're not in a service business, but you're in a product business. So you have labor costs that would probably stay. But what my drift here, and what, again, the question I wanna ask, going back to the assertions made earlier, that 250, in fact, the statement was made by a senator there that, I think the author of the amendment, that we're gonna have a half a billion dollars in multiplier effect as a result of this $250 million.
For the information?
I'd, I'd like to complete...
Just wanted to say that that was submitted by people on the panel, and that was the information given to me.
Oh, okay, so my apologies.
You're, you're, you're very forgiven.
Thank you, Senator. Okay. With that, again, in my little corner of the world, that's not so. If, if, if you could, to me, I think I'd be optimistic to say about 40% of this, 40% of this $250 million will stay in Guam, and closer to 60% will, will go somewhere. I'm, this just based on one company doing business on Guam. And with that, Dr. Jones, there was a statement made earlier that with the $250 million, we're gonna look at a half a billion spark or, or multiplier effect in, in, in this economy. Can you be a little bit, maybe you could give your opinion on those statements made that there would be this $500 million spark as a result of the multiplier effect?
Thank you. The multiplier effect is certainly worth looking at because of how money is circulating through the economy, and that's how banks make money. They make money on other people's money, and that's proven to be productive. To take your, your example one step further, if you look at labor, certainly labor costs stay on Guam. But if you look what's happening with labor, what do they do with their salaries? You're talking salary, you're talking health benefits. If you look at the households and the pressure of households right now, they're faced with their own higher costs for utilities, for gasoline, for health benefits. So when you talk about the amount of money that is staying here for the households, how much of that can they really multiply? It's still going off-island to other, pay other bills. Now, to take it another step further, I know that a number of our financial services companies are already anticipating that the retirees are going to receive this, the COLA allowances. And they're already lining up with having seminars and opportunities for them to come and talk to them about, what are you gonna do with this payment? Part of their agenda is to, to put it in investing for, for them, for their retirement and, and, and so on. If you look at where that money goes, the financial services, probably that money does not stay on Guam either. It may stay in a few of the local banks, but some of them are going off-island to brokerage houses and others. So if you look at even the percentage of what you're saying is left, when you talk about cost of goods and transportation costs, and when you get down to what's going on with the labor and the household income, there's a lot of demands already on household income, and lots of pressures there, and some of that is additional leakage. What I don't see in this multiplier is reinvestment into things that are gonna create more jobs, better efficiencies. It's just sounds as though it's, it's going to be a, some kind of saving or spending spree. And where is the, the investment that's going to really maximize this multiplier? What's the, what are people going to do with the money to, to put it back into things? And so that's, that's the issue with this multiplier effect. How much of it's going to stay here? And how much of it gets put into productive use that creates new jobs, new opportunities, and not just gets spent away? And by the way, I think that this, this talk of all of this money coming into the economy, I wouldn't doubt that some families have already spent it, expecting that's here, and they're already in debt, and they're waiting for the funds to come through so that they can pay their bills. So it's not necessarily that there's gonna be new spending related to this. It may be old spending, and they, they're catching up on their debts as well.
And I guess, I'm, just based on my experience, and like I'm saying, I'm not an economist, I'm just a regular guy that experienced and seen what I've seen and experienced in my life. life, rather than the 100%, but they're considering as, using that number for multiplier effect, I gave a number at 40%. How close do you think is that 40, is 40% way out of line? Or is it something that maybe there's some plausibility out of the 250 million? It would be that 40% and then from that 40%, that is where you calculate your multiplier effect?
I think we'd have to look at Guam particularly, but I think that the typical ratio is 60% because taxes have to be paid out of it, other obligations paid out of it. So, people don't have access to all of it. So, you're right, it's not 100%. Typically, it's, it's 60%, but given Guam, the state of, the pressures on Guam, it might be closer to your 40%. So, the study needs to be done, but, but you're right that it's not 100%. And, and experience has shown it's at least 60% and it might be lower here.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jones.
Senator Moody Barnes?
Sehlas Masi, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon to the panel members. In reference to a letter we received from Margaret and Ollie's memo on deficit financing, for me, I think they have some interesting case studies and I noticed in the case study on the Virgin Islands, their situation was similar to ours and they borrowed to pay off tax refunds, vendor payments, early retirement incentives and so on. Under the comments, it says that the infusion of cash created a positive influence on the Virgin Islands economy and I guess we're having a hard time trying to determine just what kind of positive influence our economy, on our economy this bond would possibly have. And the case study specifically lists six points where a positive influence was felt. And I'm just asking, could you please tell us some of the experiences in, about the experience of the Virgin Islands compared to here? If this were to go into effect?
When the Virgin Islands issued their bonds in 1999, they issued their bonds, they went to the market to issue bonds in conjunction with the five-year deficit reduction plan. They stepped to their plan five years late, at the time in 1999, they could not get their bonds rated. Five years later, just this year, they did receive a triple B negative, which is an investment grade rating on their bonds because they, they are now showing strong economic activity. The government is being more fiscally responsible and, and they've brought down their deficit. So, so in that case, the deficit financing helped them along with their strategic fiscal recovery plan.
So, if you were to relate the similarities to Guam, if Guam were to look into taking that journey or that path down that way, could you give a, could you share your perspective if, if, if we were to look into this path?
According to Bank of America, Ollie Piacoco and Margaret Garino, they're saying that the mechanism to, the deficit borrowing provides a mechanism to pay the government's bills sooner than future annual surpluses. So, do it as soon as you can. The infusion of cash created a positive influence on, on the Virgin Islands economy. The, one of the things, the positive benefits are you avoided paying interest on unpaid amounts. According to Bank of America Financial Advisor, they injected money into the local economy. They allowed vendors to pay employees. They continued to provide government services. They permitted utilities to regain investment grade rating and lower future borrowing costs and they reduce future rate increases according to this advice. And this is the case study that was sent to, to, from Bank of America, our financial consultant.
I thank you for that perspective because just yesterday, or was it the day before? I've been here too long, a little bit too long.
Jay Tofu.
And I'm just, you know, I, based on the comments mentioned, you know, on one hand it didn't look good and today it looks much brighter and much, you know, I see the light outside. So, I'm just hoping that with the perspective that's shared today, that we will, I will continue to have an open mind based on that. So, I thank you for that perspective, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for giving me this time.
Sure. Senator LaHawn?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good afternoon, panel. You know, when we first started talking about the bond, bonds here and stuff, there was, there was the concern about the, the RFP situation. And obviously, in the, in the $90 million dollar bond that we had discussed and disposed off at this point, the refinancing of the 1993 bonds, that was RFP'd out. Now, we're talking about 250 million. Has that been RFP'd then?
When a deficit financing was being considered in 2003, we issued an RFP for a deficit financing structure. And at that time, it wasn't tied to a public law, but that was again in 2003. We, we asked underwriters to put together structures for deficit financing.
Definancing, okay. At the, at the amount of?
300.
300?
300 million.
Okay. But when you asked them to put that together, you got a response back, obviously. But, but that was inclusive, again, of a deficit elimination plan or a cost reduction and things of that nature, right?
Yes, sir.
Similar to, say, what the CMI did. You had to put the, these structures are in place.
Yes, sir.
So, basically what we're talking about at this point and as Dr. Jones alluded to earlier, is the fact that we're talking about $250 million here. However, we don't know the marketability at, at this point because we're just discussing this, where there, there, there's nothing, there's nothing in this bill basically that has the, the plans in place basically to take it, take it to market, to be able to be, to be sold in the, in the bond market. Am I, am I correct at this point then? Pretty much?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. Okay. So, again, we don't know the marketability. It's probably not marketable based on its, its current form.
Depends on the-
Absolutely. And that's what Bank of America had, had said, pretty much. And although Dr. Jones had spoke about the, the interest rates being, the situation in, in the U.S. and interest rates being low, although in regards to, to our bond ratings, that makes a big difference as well in, in what we get and the terms, terms that we get. Let me ask Dr. Jones, in regards to, as Senator Panaleen alluded to, in regards to RGRT and if, if for some reason this, this passes, the, the RGRT would be tied into, to, to this bond? Now, there's been talk about converting our, our tax structure to, say, a sales tax. Now, the bond period, 20, 30 years, okay? If it's tied into GRT and if, if this body, maybe 30 into 31 or maybe even 29, if they were to change the track, the, the tax structure into, say, a sales tax, to move away from a GRT to a sales tax, what would that do again to the notes that have been out there? Say, for example, if this 250 million is, is sold, okay? And we get the terms and money circulating and everything and then all of a sudden the body, this body decides to, to, to change from a GRT to a sales tax, what would that do to, say, the notes now that are supposed to be tied to, to a GRT?
We have some experience with that and I'd like to also reference what Senator Tenorio was talking about, about stability. Financial institutions like stability. They like a track record, they, they don't like to take risk, I mean, especially now in this environment after all the risks that they were taking and gotten burned by. So, I think they're going, one of the things that we've had experience here when we had a small task force looking at the conversion of GRT into a sales tax, one of the things that stopped further discussions of that was the bondholder said, "You have no history on sales tax collection. It may be great and it may be no change at all from the GRT structure, but we don't know that. We do know what your GRT collections have been over all of these years and, and we trust that. We, we can make some predictions about that. There's some certainty, some stability." So, one of the things that they said was, "Yeah, go ahead, change it to a sales tax, but we may call the bond because we don't know what you're going to do and we may not want to take that kind of risk with you." So, that's an option that they may, they may exercise because it is pledged to GRT and, and if you say that we no longer have a GRT, then they may say, then you no longer have a bond with us, pay up.
So, so based on your experience and, and, and bonds calling us on, on notes, the environment that, that, that we have here, there's a high probability that if we, if, if we converted from a GRT to a sales tax based on the environment and based on what you said in your experience, that there's a high probability that they would call, call the notes?
I, I wouldn't say high probability. Everything can be negotiated, certainly. And it depends on what the economy looks like on Guam at the time. And maybe we've grown into the, the new military economy and it looks great and we've got great bond ratings and, and the forecast looks wonderful. So, that may not be so much of an issue. I think you might be able to get negotiating teams in there and, and deal with that. But at the same time, it comes down to this principle. One of the lessons learned from that experience was you think you have control over your own government until you realize if you have too much debt, it's outsiders who are making the calls for you. And that's the real problem with having too much debt. You lose the flexibility of saying, "We'd like to have a sales tax" or "We'd like to do this" or "We'd like to govern in this way." When outsiders hold the notes, they begin to call the shots. And, and so, it's, it's no different from individuals who are in debt as well. They, they can't do the things that they'd like to do because they've pledged this money to others.
Yeah. Okay. And just one more comment. Basically, I just got, we just received this letter from Bank of, Bank of America in regards to the deficit financing. And basically, what they, they said is unless you have the things in place, you know, in short, things you have in place, thoughts of marketability. I mean, it, I mean, you know, I mean, it's, it's harder, it's harder. And it, again, and again, in its present form, as I, as I said, I was asking that, that, or saying that we don't know the marketability because we don't have the structure in place at, at this point.
But according to the advice from Margaret Garino and Ollie Piacoco of Bank of America, they're saying apart from any ongoing deficit reduction plan, you know, this is, this is a good idea when you, when you propose an attractive structure, you know, to take care of the accumulated deficit. But you need, obviously, you need, need to get, you know, the best way and the, and the best, the best way for us to address this whole situation is to get a fiscal recovery and, and deficit elimination.
Absolutely. And those have to be, be in place to be able to get the best deals, to be able to, to be sold at, you know, in something that's beneficial to the people of Guam without costing, you know, with, it's, it's expensive money already, but not real expensive. And we're trying to get, again, monies for, for, for as cheap as we can. Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay. Senator Palacios and then Senator Cavell? I'm sorry, my apologies. Senator Guthridge, then Palacios, then Cavell? Sure, yeah. But they didn't raise their hand, so that's fine. So, you want to go before Cavell? All right, that's fine. Senator Guthridge, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm looking at the Bank of America analysis, I'm listening to our panel here and sort of been doing a little arithmetic and sort of came up with some numbers and was thinking this way. And please correct me if I'm wrong, members of the panel, any, any of the members of the panel. We have an obligation for the COLA and the tax refunds of at least $250 million. Is that correct at this point in time, Mr. Loggins, for the tax refunds? How much do we owe with interest as of now?
If I can recall, I don't have my sheet. I think it was $114 million for refunds plus $42 million in-
In the interest.
Interest.
And then we also have the COLA judgment from the court. And I think that really brings us well above $250 million. But, Mr. Chairman, if we were to pay $20 million a year to pay off the tax refunds and the COLA and the interest rate, let's say, is 7.5% according to the current law for the tax refunds, is that what it is?
Eight percent.
Eight percent?
Compounded daily.
I'm estimating it would take us at least 40 years to pay this obligation off at about $20 million a year, assuming we could, we could come up with $20 million a year to pay this off. And that would bring a total interest paid of about $544 million and total interest plus principal to close to $800 million. That's if we just paid it off at a little bit at a time over a 40-year period. Now, what I'd like to ask the panel, if someone could help me, assuming this COLA and tax refund bill progresses and we were to be able to get the loan, the bond rather, to amass the monies to pay these obligations, how long would it take us to pay the bond, for the bond? And how would that compare with us just paying it off on a piecemeal basis in terms of costs to the people of Guam? Does anyone have that information?
Seven hundred eighty.
Yeah. But I think we need to know that number, Mr. Chairman. How many years would it take and how much would it cost compared to if we just paid it off on a piecemeal basis, let's say at $20 million a year, over 40 years? Of course, we know that many of our taxpayers would be gone and many of our COLA recipients would be gone over that period as well. Okay. While they're researching that, I have another question. And this one is to, to Ms. Wayness. Again, I want to thank Ms. Wayness for being here with all of your colleagues and the panel members, especially our economists, Dr. Hales, Dr. Jones and our Getca representatives. This is my question. Would the administration float the $250 million bond just based on the current tax structure, meaning no tax increases or fee increases? In other words, if you don't have additional tax increases or fees to pay for the $250 million bond, would you still want to float it? I know this is a very direct question, but we need a direct answer. We have some visual aids that Senator Cavell is holding to help, so. Panel, please.
I think you're asking a question that's, who gets paid first? How do we pay our-
No, here's my question. Do you want to float this bond? Do you still support this bond float? If you can't get enhancements, tax revenue enhancements or fee enhancements, would you still want to float the bond?
When you're talking to a taxman and when you, when, when taxpayers come into my office, this is on a real-life situation, when people come into my office and they ask for their refund and I can't give it to them because I'm limited to the amount- and I can't give it to them because I'm limited to the amount of monies I get daily and only get it four days a week. And I think it's about $170,000, uh, a day, which almost comes up to a million dollars a week. There are taxpayers that come in and I can't help them. It's very difficult to say no to somebody that needs their money. That's why I, the bond, to me, would take care of the people, including the COLA recipients who are sitting out there waiting to get something before. I personally feel, because my mother, who was, who's worked 35 years with the government, she passed away in December and the issue of her COLA was in her mind before she really got sick and she never, um, used it for her health.
Senator Guthridge, um, just, just to make sure, I, I don't think I heard the question. I think the question was, and we need an answer from the administration, is whether you're going to float the bond without revenue enhancements, without increases in taxes?
But that's really what I want to know.
So, we need an answer from the administration on that question?
Yes, we do, and we have representatives from the administration here. But who is, who is the spokesperson at this moment for the administration that can answer this question? We need to answer this question right now. Would you be willing to float the bond for $250 million without raising taxes or fees or any other enhancements to pay for it? Just give us an answer.
Uh, Senator, as you know, when, um, we transmitted the '08 budget proposal, it included, it was very evident in there that, uh, the governor supports $250 million in borrowing for these two particular items and revenue enhancement along, it was part of the plan. Uh, should the budget, uh, pass without any revenue enhancement, then at that time, uh, we would, of course, part of, uh, those, some of us that are up here are going to sit down and evaluate, uh, the outcome of this, uh, budget document to see if it is something that, and make a recommendation to the governor one way or the other because obviously, one component is missing. So, depending on what the final product is at the end of the day, that's when we will, uh, uh, make a recommendation to the governor in the end, and in the end, he will make that decision.
Okay, my, the rationale for my question is simple. At least from my perspective, as a senator who is supportive of the bond, if we should approve this for all the reasons that have been discussed, I, as a senator, do not want the administration to come back and say, "We need to increase taxes and fees to pay for it." I would want the administration to utilize the language within the bond that requires internal, uh, uh, controls within the government so that increases would not be necessary in taxes or fees. So, I think it's important for the administration to understand that that's pretty much what I see here, is some of the sentiments that are being stated by the senators here. They do not want this to result in higher taxes or fees for our people. And we need the administration to start thinking in that direction. If you really want this bond, you have to think in that direction. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I still need my other question answered on how long it would take to pay for the bond versus the piecemeal thing.
Senator, I think the, uh, they're working to try to get that, but that's going to take a few minutes, I suspect. So, we're going to go to the next speaker. Senator Palacios? Senator Spishu, did you want to speak? All right.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask, uh, some questions with, uh, Dr. Jones. Dr. Jones, your, your backbone is in financing, bond financing?
No, it's not. It's in economics.
Okay, okay, economics, well, it's related. Uh, I'd see, my question is, right here, the $250 million proposal is to pay, pay down the government deficit in equal amount, of course, because it's, it's to pay over debt. And you have heard testimony here that actually questioned the ability of this government to, to finance that. But then at the same time, the debt that is planned to be repaid by this is still with the governor of Guam. And don't you think that then, by the action of, of, of some members of these bodies in, in their presentation, that this government cannot afford to pay down some of these debts, send a, a, really, uh, uh, a message, a negative message that this government, if you cannot refinance $250 million of what you owe, that means that you don't have $20 million to devote to paying down this debt? Would that not be the message that's received by the financing establishment out there then? Because this debt, Guam is stuck with it. It's not going away. And, and so, if the government does not, is saying, "We, we don't have $18 million here to pay the $250 million," and the $250 million is supposed to pay equal amount in debt, and it was saying now we don't have that, that means then that we're not willing to deal with this even by that amount next year and the year before, won't it? And wouldn't that, wouldn't that be itself a negative message? As opposed to this body attempting to float a bond, to pay half of that, and along with this bond, would have a structured repayment process?
My initial comment was that while we're discussing, um, details after the event of whether it's marketable. And the beauty of market forces and market analysis is, uh, they'll tell you whether you've put together a product that they think, um, they're willing to provide funding for. And they're going to do the analysis and they're going to, um, look at the finances, the stability of those finances, and, and they'll make an assessment. It looks as though, um, Bank of America has, has pointed that out and also said that with tight government controls and, and the lockbox and this comes first out of GRT, um, it may find a market. The question to, an economic question is, what does that leave for the rest of your budget and planning process? And you, what you face with education first or, um, health and safety first, when they're saying, "This comes first." And so, from a, from an economic point of view, it's, what do you do with everything else? They'll, they'll figure out whether they want to finance it or not. And you're right, they'll tell you, the market will tell you, and at what price. And, and as Senator Luan said, you may not get the best price for this bond, but you'll, you may get some price. And, and then what you have left is how you, um, allocate the rest of your, your resources to other projects and services here on Guam. And so, it's not just the amount of money that's going to be allocated over time, but also, um, what do you give up to get that?
Just one last question, again, from just sitting there and hearing some presentations from the different views here, is that, again, the presentation that this government cannot find or cannot guarantee $18 million a year to pay, to begin to pay down this debt. How did you regard, I mean, attitude like that, I mean, that, that doesn't, that tell you that the attitude of this legislature, at least from some members of this, is that paying off this debt is less, is, is the least important than to maintaining operation and so forth, and not in equal part? Because there, again, this debt is over half a billion dollars and it will continue to increase. And so, don't you, and I ask you, don't, do you not get the attitude that some members of these bodies regard these debts as the least important? Well, in fact, it will not go away. And this continues to reflect negatively on the government by this body's inability, inability to seriously deal with this. You know, we deal with this now with a planned repayment. So, between inaction by this body and action of what we're trying to do now, which will bring a more negative perspective from the, uh, from our side? Which will you, a more negative perspective? The inaction of this body to at least pay down half of this owed? Or at least try to, to issue a $250 million bond and then work on how to refinance that? Thank you.
The, the, your first point about, will it find a market and at what price? Is, is a technical, is a technical issue?
I understand, but-
And, and that, that can be solved.
Can be solved. I know it can be solved.
Or can be answered. The political side of this is what's ahead for this body. Is, and I said also earlier that in the face of Guam's emerging new economy, do you want to carry forward this, these old problems? Or will this $250 million at whatever price, close it out and create a new optimism that builds the future of Guam? Now, between those two points is, what of this $250 million sustains building that optimism? Certainly, it closes the door. Some people may say it opens another one, that, okay, well, if they did it once before, they can do it again. You know, we get into trouble, we'll just borrow more money. Uh, but I think as I read this Bank of America statement, they're saying, "We want to see, and the success of the Virgin Islands and others is not just credited to the money, but to how the money was handled and the, the procedures and policies that were put in place to guide the economy forward." So, I think the message is exactly that. You want to put some kind of closure to this, but in a way that says, "We can't go down this road again," and, and really be, mean that. So, I, I see your point. I think the technical issue will be, will be addressed. The political issue is, is still to be resolved and, and that's, I think, the, the harder one that you're, you're faced with.
Thank you, Doctor.
Senator Spishu, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Chairman. You know, Mr. Chairman, for those of us who have, um, introduced this $250 million bond borrowing proposal, uh, I think we saw, we see this as an opportunity, uh, to want to address, uh, existing debt. Uh, and if you look at, um, our, our requirement of a bond indenture, uh, which is absent of the, um, original proposal submitted in Bill 143, uh, that's why people keep saying that this is the similars what, to what Governor Camacho, um, introduced. Well, we argued that it's, uh, the amount is the same, but the difference is, is the distribution of proceeds. Uh, in, in one version, they wanted to pay off, uh, GPA, I believe, and other liability, other debt. Uh, in this version, we wanted to focus on two, uh, things, and that's the, uh, tax refund, uh, outstanding obligations and the court-ordered COLA. We see this as a, um, opportunity, uh, to once and for all force the government of Guam to be fiscally responsible, to appropriate to a certain amount, and, and the 95% is, if it's not set in stone, we can adjust that, but to appropriate to a, a certain amount. And all of these requirements will be in a bond indenture. And, and someone asked, "Well, you know, 10 years ago, we said the very same thing. We said that, "Let's bar for tax refunds now and we promise not to do these things again." I think the difference before us is that this will be in a bond indenture. It'll be a contractual, uh, obligation. And anytime we don't do what we say we're going to do in the bond indenture, then that's going to cause us to default on the bond market. And you know, the leaders at that time would certainly not want to, um, uh, do that. I also, uh, want to clarify and clarify some of the misconceptions that this $250 million bond borrowing is not marketable. It's not, we're told it's not, um, marketable, uh, by some, uh, members of this legislature. Then we got a letter from, uh, Bank of America Securities and they clarify, "Marketing and credit considerations. We should clarify the difference between the marketability of the actual bond issue and marketability of the overall credit of the government. Under current market conditions, we believe the bonds can be marketed and sold under the bond structure and security contemplated by the proposed legislation." They also say something that, um, we've said from the very beginning. However, doing so without a plan in place to address ongoing deficits as well as the additional debt service will likely have negative credit implications. So, that's where those requirements of the, um, bond indenture would be, uh, to force us to, to address the, uh, current structural imbalance. Dr. Jones, I'm, I'm, I'm looking, I'm listening to your presentation. I want, I appreciate that. I want to say that we, um, recognize that there needs to be the other element of how we're going to finance this. And we've introduced, uh, other options in the legislature to go after the, uh, roughly $100 million that's currently owed to the government of Guam. We tried to give revenue tax the, um, resource in the last budget go-around and those amendments did not pass. So, we're, we're sitting here wondering, you know, how do we address our current tax structure? Um, Senator Guthridge has been pushing the majority to have a tax review commission and that obviously never took place. That was a requirement in law. In, in, in prior Budgets 2002, we had a, a, a process by which, uh, the Special Economic Services Group and the Special Accounting Services Group under the Office of Finance and Budget, I want to acknowledge that the, um, chairman has moved forward to seeing those things, uh, happen. You know, if we, it, it, we're trying to do these things by law, but unfortunately, law does not, uh, is not weight enough for us to get serious about the things, uh, that we must do to, to prevent us from this downward, uh, economic, um, spiral. And so, if it's in the bond indenture, that's probably one guarantee that we're going to, we're going to address this. I, I want to ask you, um, what is your outlook for Guam? In five years, in 10 years, based on the current conditions? Notwithstanding the military buildup, I, everybody says the military buildup is going to bring this huge, uh, economic activity to Guam. Then for almost immediately, other people say, "Oh, that's not a done deal, so we shouldn't count on that." Just based on current, uh, local market conditions, what do you believe Guam's economic outlook to be?
I think you can't separate the military, um, from the economic outlook because it, it is at least factoring in right now as speculation.
Sure, sure.
So, it's already here and it's already a, a part of the economic activity that we see. For example, what's going on with real estate prices, what's going on with land sales. So, there's already speculation in the market. The outlook for that is, um, will it hold? And I think there's informed speculation. When you look at Home Depot coming here, um, the various restaurant chains coming here, so there's informed speculation that's saying, "The market looks promising here on Guam. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here." Part of that is probably because of, um, the military buildup and partly because they do see some economic promise here. Um, construction growth and, and other things going on here. So, the outlook for Guam looks positive. Certainly compared to what we've been through in the past 15 years. Now, when I say positive, um, I also started thinking not, not too, too long ago that we may have a perfect storm brewing of, of a positive nature. When you look at the last time around when Guam's economy was, was under stress, the U.S. was raising interest rates, which is not what we needed at the time. We needed better interest rate environment. This time around, it looks like our economy is set to boom. And at a time when interest rates are recently lowered. So, and, and you talk about putting money back in, in the hands of the people of Guam, which is a good thing. And all of this comes together. And I'd say, my immediate outlook is, this could be very much of a good thing. And, and just as you said, it's hard to get a handle on all of this in, in legislation. It's going to be hard to get a handle on, on it in just the practicality, the business environment. There's going to be more money spinning through this place. I've been on record as saying, when I first came here, uh, people were saying in the mid-'90s, "Any fool could make money here on Guam." It wasn't very difficult to do because there was so much money floating around. Um, I expect that that is going to happen again, that you're going to see lots of money coming through this economy. I expect that that is going to happen again, that you're going to see lots of money coming through this economy and lots of opportunity. It's just a matter of when you look out five, 10, 15, 20 years, have we done a good job in building an infrastructure to capitalize on this that is sustainable? In other words, if Guam is so strategic, where are the strategic jobs? I don't want to hear just about construction and and tourism and all of that. Where where where's the new businesses? What what other things are going to come here? What what kind of consulting industries can we build here? What what's the intellectual capacity? Have we begun to think about putting in place, from all this money that is going to be spinning through here, a way of capturing it and solving the one problem, and that is creating domestic demand, domestic opportunity? And I think that is the challenge that's being overlooked. And and if that happens, then at the end of the day, when we look at this, the 250 million, the bond service of that may be insignificant if we get it right. Because we're, i- it may be less of a part of Guam's budget, and it may be looked at as a good decision at the time to get some money, to solve some problems, put some closure on it and move forward. Time will tell. But I think it's those kinds of planning, those kinds of issues that, and you're right, you can't legislate that, but you're hoping that there's enough stimulus from this money that puts those kinds of capital improvements, capital investments in here, rather than just turning a bunch of money loose on with with households and individuals to kind of let it go circulating, and there's no way of getting something out of that that's sustainable.
And if someone were to ask you 15 years ago, what you believed the economic outlook at the time to be, what would you have said?
I would said, look at the past. You know, Guam has has a history to its economy. It has its own business cycle. It looks like i- it it has a fourteen-year cycle, especially in the housing market. So I would look back to that and say, look at the history. And usually, it has its ups and downs, but there's an economic principle of regression toward the mean. And that is, what is it usually like? It has its highs, its highs, its lows, but generally, all else equal, how is it stable state? And I'd pick that. And and I think that's what a lot of economists do. They try and 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 that's what is worrisome about about this new growth phase for for the government of Guam. And that is, how do you smooth that out a bit so that it's sustainable? Not just all at once and right away, but how do you spread it out over the next 10, 15, 20 years? And and improve Guam's business cycle?
And should shouldn't some of that um infrastructure also include having a strong government that's financially balanced and and structurally balanced? Where right now you have your deficit exceeding your operating, annual operating requirements? And so we're, this government is continually having to pay uh catch-up so that the current vendors are not getting paid, the current uh financial obligations are not getting paid because of the idea of paying uh catch-up. And so what does that do then to a um the business uh e- environment? Where do you think uh businesses might not want to come and set up uh a business here on Guam? If there's this ongoing reputation that have a business with the government of Guam, lucky if you get paid. Go move to Guam, uh file your taxes, lucky if you get your tax refund. Go go to Guam because whatever the court orders, they're not going to follow because that's Guam.
I I I've been on record as saying, and and I and I know this is perhaps misunderstood, but I'm a fan of strong government. And and I want the government to be a strong partner with the private sector. Um, and right now, i- my concern is if the debt gets carried away and and if there isn't put some kind of um security on this, the government looks like a very weak player to the private sector. So I I want to see strong government, and I and I think what you're saying is exactly on target.
And that's why we have provisions in the bond indenture uh that would force uh the government to do that for the next 30 years. So the government will not be subject to, the policies will not be subject to the political pressures uh and the political will um at that time. If we're uh uh as the previous speaker talked about, if we just, maybe we just pay $20 million a year for this uh income tax refunds and uh court order cola judgment. It'll take 40 years before we pay this off, and it'll be at a cost of uh $780 million. And so I think that's that's the the um struggle right now that each of us have. Uh, do we address this debt in this kind of structure? And or do we just say, oh, as more money comes in, we'll just pay down this uh debt? And I'd like to see this legislature capitalize on the optimism and the potential uh to take care of this debt and 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 assist the government right now with this current cash flow uh crisis and then resolve some of those issues there. And to have a say, all these provisions of bond indenture, which will take care of the concerns that, oh, we'll probably be here 10, 15 years from now, arguing the same thing. So I I really want to thank you for the time you're spending here at the legislature.
Senator Shimbuzo, you're recognized.
Yes, Dr. Jones, it's nice to see you. Thank you for uh coming down, you know, being a member of the university community. It always uh makes me feel good that um university comes out as part of the community service. And also, Mr. Hill, Gary, always a pleasure. I bumped into you last night, and when I didn't see you earlier, I start, please call him to come down because the this gentleman has been in government of Guam, have been, you know, before us many times to give the economic perspective of an economist. Let me just lay the foundation a little bit about my part of the world. You know, I I uh, anybody that knows me, I'm more uh in the realm of social sciences. The issue, so therefore, uh maybe um can be considered a little bit knowledgeable in social impacts as it relates to policies. Let me, the question that I'm going to ask here is this. Or let me put it in this this manner. Maybe if I can ask a little attention to the question. Thank you. If I have a debt, you know, I I have a debt, let's say 2,500. Well, let's make it $250,000 for a home, for example, or a debt. And I was paying 8% at that time. And it's going to take me 30 years to pay my my debt. And then, lo and behold, like what's even happening right now in our nation is because of the housing uh problems where people are selling their homes because they can't afford, you know, for whatever reason, the mortgage. And let's say here in our part of the world, uh, the financing institutions say, we need to stimulate the the housing market. And then it comes out with a lower than 8% interest. And let's say they came down to even 5%. Maybe in some cases, 4%, it's just gone down lower, especially after Pangsangwa. If you recall, the interest went all the way down. Is it prudent for me to go to that financial institution to ask to refinance my debt at a lower interest? Yes, a g- yes or no? Gary or anybody?
I did that.
You did that, right?
I was paying at 8%, and it went down by 2%. Of course, I borrowed more than what I owed, so I kind of.
Because you wanted to do other things, right? But but just in in principle, would that make sense? Revenue taxation, the taxman says yes. Gary, what what do you, what do you say? Make that the mic on, please. Thank you, Gary.
Sure, if you have a debt and you have the opportunity to refinance it at a lower cost, certainly. If if the uh savings from on the interest would offset the refinancing costs, that would be desirable. Of course, it's it's always best to get the best deal going in because you'll get savings from the start. And there's always the possibility that you may not be in a condition to refinance when the interest rates are low because of your uh credit or other things.
And that was what being offered when you're going in. Now, it's already past going in. I'm in, I'm in the house, and this opportunity comes up.
Sure.
Sure. So make sure it's not only going in, what you know, it's when you're going out and you're going out happy. Because you refinance, you know, so that that's, I I I'm laying the foundation now. Because we have a debt, and we have a court order judgment. It's not an issue anymore, as according to my good colleague, Senator Pangolin, stated, and I learned a lot. It's not an issue of the settlement, it's an issue of trying to find the the judge, you know, judge hunting. Now, being a debt, wouldn't that give out to the to a better, uh, what's that, uh, image to the world, the financial world? That uh, you know, when there is a debt to be paid, we try to do the best we can to pay it. Let's 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 look at this. I used to be the deputy of tax, revenue taxation, so I have a little bit knowledge of the taxman. Now, if I was to keep that $134 million of tax refund and continue to compound day at 8%, we've already accumulated an interest of 42 million, am I not correct? 42 million dollars of interest. That's as of today. Am I not correct that we are on an yearly basis, Mr. Ilagun, that we would be accumulating an additional 14 million to 15 million on interest payment alone?
I don't I don't know what the calculation is per year.
More or less. But we will be paying on an annual basis.
Yes.
Additional interest, right?
Right.
So if we, if if you were to, at the rate of paying out the tax return, can you make it louder? At the rate of paying all your back taxes, right? I heard earlier, Senator Guthers, and I'll stand to be corrected, that it was just kind of, I guess, they made it would take another 10 years to clear all of the back. At 20 million a year, so but if we went on that process, how many years would it be, at an average of 10 years? Pay out at the rate we're paying. My my understanding here is that if we pay at the middle of the year, whatever we can get from DBMR to give you to pay out the what's processed, it could take, what, five years? 10 years? 40 years? Oh. So multiply that by, let's say, even 10 million a year. Or even the 14 from the data that I've been receiving. Even at 14 times 10, that's 140 million, and we still didn't get the tax out?
I I I don't think you would ever pay it off because you're always, every year, you start off with a new amount. So uh if you paid off 2004, you've got 2007 that comes up. So you know, you're just paying what you can from the prior year. You're never trying to get current to pay off the amount in the right year. You're just trying to pay amounts from prior year. And you're not trying to pay off all the way up to what what is due today.
So as of today, we've probably accumulated 140, uh, let's see, 134 million dollars, 400,000 now. So that is a debt. What this Bill 168, it's now a new section, proposes to do is to pay that debt, refinance it at a lower rate. Because even if we don't do it, if we don't do it, there's going to be no leakage because we never turned on the water. We never turned on the water. In fact, I'm not sure, I got to uh understand that word leakage. In my part of the world, this is the way I look at it. If I go to the store, they buy um the product, the store owner buys the product, has it shipped, has it handled. When it lands here, their people look at it and say, what is the landed cost? What is my overhead? What is my profit margin? And so forth, and then I come in and I buy the product. But if I don't have that money in my hand, for example, or even the leakage, then that product will not be sold, so it remains stagnant. The $250 million in terms of going into the economy, it's not so much maybe in terms of sustainability. You use that in terms of the industries that we are trying to attract here to be able to sustain the tax base. All this does is to refinance the debt that's already due at a lower interest rate. Yes?
I I would characterize it a little bit differently. You're paying off your debt with another debt.
At a lower interest.
Perhaps, but there's a cost.
Just like my house.
But there's a cost, I mean, part of the refinancing game was people were refinancing, but they found that the provider, the refinance instrument, was making a cut on that. So it wasn't quite quite the the 2% because you had all these fees and other things that went along with it and special insurance. So that became a whole game for them, but but.
But that's the cost of refinancing.
Okay, the cost of refinancing.
And that's just the way, that's just, that's just the normal course of doing business that I have to pay.
And I'm I'm out of post.
My home is refinanced for 30 years at a lower interest rate, which what a lot of people did when they went to refinance the repairs of their homes as as a result of Typhoon Pangsangwa, and they were offering lower rates. So not to have not gone back and and get those rates, uh, even the the director of tax. So that that's the prudent thing to do, at least for his household. That's why I mentioned earlier, my world in terms of the social value of what we can do with this.
My other my other point is that certainly people are owed this money, and it really, and it it would help to have it circulating in Guam's economy. No doubt about that. But how did we get into this position in the first place?
We didn't pay it.
That that you didn't pay it.
Didn't pay it, so I'm I come here to offer solution.
Because, okay, so you're paying it, but the my point here is you take on this $250 million debt. Not that it can't be managed, not that it can't be can't be effective. But the point is, going forward, what assurances do you have that next year I get my tax refund? When now your debt service is eating away at your ability to pay back future taxpayers? And will you get into the same situation? You may have paid off the past, but how how do you help assure that the government has enough revenues going forward to not get into this situation again? When now you've got a larger slice of the pie going to debt service?
Well, that that's the same thing that I would do in my home when I went and refinanced it. I want to make sure that I'm still able to pay it. And if we read carefully in the bond, we do set aside the 5%. We 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 do uh uh impose on this government uh a discipline in in spending. Only 95% of that, we have 5% on the ready day fund in the event that the the grocery she doesn't go. What I'm saying that it's there, it's right there. But whether I do nothing or not, it's a debt, it's $250 million right there. It's a debt that's going to accumulate and accumulate if we don't do anything. If we don't go back and refinance it, that's all I'm saying. It's a debt whether, you can't say we're going to pay off, uh, uh, operation, or this is not operation. This is a debt that is owed to the people of Guam. They take it out of my uh my wages, they garnish it and put it away. They take that away. And now we, it it's a debt to them, I owe them, but I'm paying them a larger interest. What this does, it sets a lower interest, it sets a a a a limitation, set aside 5%. You're saying if you can't pay that debt, that's there. According to uh uh the 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 people on on the table, that could run about 20 to 30 million dollars a year. 30 to 20 million dollars a year that's staying in that fund. So that's my answer, Dr. Jones, it's in the indenture, uh, in that area. So I want. So I want to just bring the point, because the issue of, uh, this bond and, and the issues of leakage, I, I just needed to know, that ultimately, if I, we don't have that two hundred and fifty million dollars circulating out there, we still have a debt. And to, and to close, on the other side of the house, you know, there have been comments about the rush to pay the bond, let me tell you, look out there, these are not spring chickens, these are not young people, these are people in crutches, these are people that need to pay for their medical care, yes, they're gonna go out and pay off their bills, yes, they go out and go buy, yes, and they're gonna go out and save, and there is nothing wrong with going and trying to put money in investment to get a greater return, absolutely nothing wrong with that. But to not even have it, you will not have that leakage to pay for that, uh, uh, financial advisors, you have nothing, they have nothing. Time is not on their side. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I was about to say, it's not on yours either. You've exhausted your time.
But I appreciate, I appreciate you giving me that few moments of time.
Quite a few moments. Um, I'm gonna go to Senator Espaldam, we'll finish up round one, and then we'll go to round two, okay? Senator Espaldam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't need to lay a foundation. Um, I think the foundation has been laid. Uh, and again, I believe this is a good opportunity for us to have an exchange in terms of asking questions as opposed to stating our, our preferences at this point. Uh, what I need to ask, I don't know which who I will ask, maybe it might be Bertha, it might be Dr. Jones, might even be, uh, Mr. Hiles, you know, Bertha, when you gave us these, these sheets the other day, right, these, these projections, um, the pro forma, right, I just need to know, next year, I believe, the minimum wage is going to increase, right? Is that correct?
I, I, I think, by January, it would have completed the last phase of the full escalation of minimum wage.
So I, I guess the question that needs to follow then is that, do we anticipate, because those wages will increase, do we, is there a corresponding perhaps increase in tax revenues because of that increase in minimum wage?
I think when you increase minimum wage, you're only increasing the bottom part of the people who are making minimum amounts, and really it's just people who are make, probably filing to get their refunds back, filing with probably no tax or even EITC with their tax return. So if you're looking for revenues because it went up by that amount, it's at the bottom of, of rates that you're, or wages that you're raising, not the higher rates, wages.
So you, you're, you're saying it's in essence, Art, that there, you don't even anticipate any kind of increase in any revenue, tax revenue?
It's probably gonna be very minimal, 'cause you're looking at, you know, people who don't make money.
Is that reasonable to assume, Dr. Jones, then, that, I mean, because, wouldn't you imagine that if the bottom rung of employees is gonna get an increase, that those mid and upper levels would probably even seek the same? Because if you're bringing up that, that level to what maybe the mid, mid-level employees are now earning, then wouldn't you expect that the pressure would be on the industry to raise those rates as well?
Yeah, there, there's concern about what they call bump up, that people look over their shoulder and say, well, now, the lower wage jobs are making that much money, it's close to what I'm earning, so I want, me too. And so you see a me too kind of thing going through the, the payroll, and of, of course, it's, it's not going to affect the, the upper echelons, they're still going to get their, their salaries, but in the lower ranks, you'll see some, some additional increases, which is what's really worrying a lot of businesses, that it's not so much just the minimum wage, it's what happens to the other workers.
Right, so if, if that does happen, then, and you see those middle income level saying, well, those guys gotta raise, they're not at, almost at par with us, we do, you know, over and above what they do, we should be going higher, and if the businesses are pressured into that situation, what would be the ramifications of that in terms of taxes?
Especially as part of the, the growth projections for the Guam economy, you, there's some anticipation out there that there's gonna be a competition for jobs, an attraction for hiring more workers, and so the HR folks that I talk to are saying they're anticipating having to pay more for their labor force, and if that were to happen, you'd expect to have higher, higher income taxes paid.
Higher income taxes paid. So, Bertha, I guess the question is, is that reflected anywhere in these numbers?
Uh, no, Senator.
No?
No.
Because as it stands, as it stands now, since it's not reflected in here, if we do go out and take out this loan, we're still gonna be running short, and you testified to this effect, we still need to go out and, and, and figure out revenue enhancements to the tune of something like thirty to forty million dollars, is that correct? Isn't it, didn't you just say that, didn't you say that, I think, a couple days ago?
I, what I mentioned in, with regard to the thirty to forty is, is that, um, the budget as it sits now, uh, my projection is that it will be short thirty to forty.
Okay, so it'd be short thirty to forty, but that's without factoring in perhaps what Dr. Jones said, that there may be an effect, a positive effect in terms of, of revenue into tax, taxes, right?
Yes, but I.
So we don't necessarily have to, we don't necessarily have to agree that, that thirty or forty is, is, is really, I mean, in other words, we could potentially zero out if that takes effect, right? Or maybe instead of thirty or forty, we're maybe only gonna get ten, a ten million dollar difference of revenue enhancements.
That could be, Senator, but I tend to agree with Art, I, I have looked into some preliminary analysis on the minimum wage, and I don't feel that it will be as, I mean, that significant. I believe only six thousand of the forty, forty-five thousand private sector employees, according to a release that was made by, I believe, the Chamber, was gonna be impacted. And if I took their, I, I took just a straight line what their average salaries are, and I, um, did a, a calculation, I believe it was going to be something like three million per annum or something, it's not anywhere near thirty that will be.
Okay, so in other words, that's why you're saying necessitates revenue enhancements through, perhaps, bringing back, you know, revenue enhancements through, through taxes, higher taxes, increased taxes.
For, I, I'm sorry, I don't.
Well, I guess bottom line is, you're recommending, earlier was said, I mean, not today, but that, that what we'd have to do is go either through revenue enhancements, cost cutting, or both.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Now, do you have a plan for cost cutting?
The plan, the deficit elimination pro forma that is in front of you incorporates cost cutting, because the growth that was supplied is only one point five percent for non-essential agencies and only three, only three percent for critical agencies, which is going to force a reduction through the, the years out to twenty fourteen. It will require a reduction for us to live within that, that level, because, uh, the reason I say this is, is because increments, normal increments for classified employees, which, you know, are the most of our government employees, that in and of itself costs one point one percent per annum. So the cushion of one point five is hardly anything when you consider, on the operating expense side, you have to also consider inflation, inflationary costs and other things that, of course, you know, are going to cost more, so that it will force that. So the deficit elimination pro forma does include a plan for reduction in, in the fact that we very, very, uh, the growth for, for spending was very frugal.
Okay, uh, that's all for now, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Senator Frank Blas Jr., you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, panel, again, for showing up, and, and if you don't mind, Ms. Duane, I'd like to go ahead and, and add on to questioning that you got from the good senator from the morning here. In your pro forma, you did recognize for, you said a one point five percent growth in the non-critical areas and a three percent growth in the critical areas?
Yes, yes, Senator.
Yet, in the proposal as provided, where there's a, the proposal calls for a cap of the expenditures to ninety-five percent of the total revenues received.
That's correct.
Can that be achieved without raising, uh, without the, the revenue enhancements or, quite honestly, raising taxes?
No. It, it can, it cannot be achieved. And, and also to clarify, that the five percent cap will be in addition to the one point five and, and three percent. It would be in addition to what the pro forma is showing, because it takes away five percent from how I balanced it year to year.
But the five percent, well, and I remember yesterday, one of the question, one of the questions that we had asked yesterday, or request that we had, uh, yesterday was, you were going to run some new numbers?
Yes, I have new numbers, when, when I, I'm waiting for.
Because the, and, and this, here's the concern that I've got here, is this does not reflect the five percent, uh, these, on, 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 on these two sheets that we got here.
I, I, I have new numbers in that I incorporated all of the amendments to Bill one forty-three to date.
Okay.
So I updated the expenditure side as well as the revenue side in the pro forma.
Do you have that with you now?
I do.
So, Mr. Chair, can we take a recess so that we can get those figures?
Yeah, this will also, um, we'll come back to you if you'd like.
Yes, please.
This will end round, uh, one, but you'll complete round one.
I will, thank you, sir.
All right, we'll be in a few minutes recess, and then you're first. The committee of the whole is back in order, Senator Frank Blas Jr., continuation of your questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair, and, and Ms. Duane, thank you very much for, for providing us this, uh, this update here. Before I go on to a question that I have with regards to two hundred and fifty million dollar bond, um, I'm doing comparison of figures that you had provided about three, three weeks ago, about, this is, this is the age of this report, right, Ms. Duane?
Yes.
About three weeks ago?
Yes.
And the report figures that you provide today, and more specifically, the figures for fiscal year two thousand and seven current, notice that in your expenses, you show here the subtotal operations, uh, on the document you gave us three weeks ago, uh, was pegged at three hundred and ninety-one million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and forty. And then, the document you give us today, it's three hundred and eighty million, two hundred and four, four hundred and eighty-three.
Yes, yes, you're correct, sir. I, I have to say that there was a, an adjustment that I did on that, on that one, uh, for fiscal year, are you talking about column D?
Yes, ma'am.
Column D of page two?
Column D, line forty-six.
There were some changes, and yes, you are correct. The first one showed three ninety-one, but in reconciling, uh, when the body asked me yesterday to provide an update, an updated pro forma based on, um, the cola and supplemental in particular, um, I decided that I should just update the pro forma for, uh, everything that has occurred with, as, reflecting Bill one forty-three as amended. So this reflects, uh, Bill one forty-three as it sits in committee now. All of the numbers that changed. And in the process of doing that, Senator, I found, um, when I was doing my comparisons with last fiscal year, I found some peculiarities that didn't, uh, really reconcile with, with me in my mind. So I went back and I revisited the two thousand and seven, and there were some, um, extension errors that I made, and that was corrected. So if you will see now, uh, on column D, line seventy-five, it now shows zero, which is, um, it reflects a balance of what's been appropriated and the, uh, recently adopted revenues contained in public law twenty-nine, zero, three.
Okay. Um, and it is my understanding that this document, the one that you just gave us now, was reflective of all the discussions we had with regards to Bill one forty-three as amended, right?
That's correct. Uh, I just want to, um, there's, there's also, um, I, I just want to point out, just for easier reference and reading, the reason I ran it in color is the greens, all, all the green, yeah, uh, numbers should, uh, reflect an update from the, uh, original pro forma, which was submitted to the legislature. So everything that is green is an update, meaning, uh, it's been revised since the original.
Okay. Reason why I'm asking this, ma'am, is, my last recollection in our discussions with Bill one forty-three as we have continued, this does not reflect a ninety million dollar bond?
Uh, I, no, it doesn't, Senator, you're correct. And the reason is because the ninety million dollar bond is a, a refinancing of the territorial education facilities fund, and this pro forma is general fund only.
But would any of the activities as a result of what we decide to do with the ninety million dollar bond, the proceeds of that bond, affect some of the?
Yes, you're correct. You are correct. Uh, it will, it does affect the pro forma going forward, and that's why, if you will, uh, look at, uh, columns, page two, column D, I'm rather, column, uh, yeah, columns D and E, line forty-three, I'm sure, Senator, you're interested in health, uh, that is the health role, and it's showing currently that, uh, the current authorization for health is forty-eight point nine, for the two thousand and eight budget, it's a reduction of about eleven point five, and the reason is because some of those are in the bond, they're in the tobacco bond, and they're in the ninety million dollar bond. But if you look to the next column over, which is column F, I reinstated what the health agencies would really be needing come next fiscal year, because the bond is only one time, as far as, uh, assisting in their operations.
And I understand, and the reason why I asked this, Bertha, is because if you and I didn't have that, this discussion now, and I was to get hold of this and recognizing what, if somebody was watching this right now, and knows the conversations we've been having throughout our discussions of one forty-three, and looks at this and asks the same question that I, that I asked about, where's the ninety million dollars?
Yes.
Um, this doesn't look good.
Yeah, we, it cannot reflect the ninety million, because that's another front source, and it's a refinancing of the.
Sure, but, but I, I think that, if you look at this too here, Bertha, and you gotta admit here, is that, you know, if you, you also take into consideration, you know, what we're paying as far as debt service.
That's correct.
You know, um, and normally, when I wanna, when I wanna, every month, when I wanna see how much, you know, I've spent as, as opposed to how much I've, I've earned, um, and I, I wanna do a, you know, a basically a balance sheet for my household, which is what I was expecting from this thing, I, I would expect that kind of information too, to be reflective.
Oh, um, yes, the front, uh, page one is the revenues?
Uh-huh.
And page two is the expenses, and then you'll have a summary on the bottom of it.
I understand, but you see, on the expenses, the expenses, we continue to show that we're paying, right?
Yes.
But now we don't reflect what we've got as a result of what we're paying for. See what I'm getting at?
Not, not only for the two fifty bond, not, not the ninety.
That's right, but, but, and the ninety is just a, is just a restructuring, a refinancing of an existing bond which we're continuing to pay, right? And it shows in your expenditure. See what I'm saying? Is we show it as an expenditure, but we don't show how we gain from it.
No, it's not showing us either, it's not showing here at all.
But shouldn't we be showing it, because we're paying for it?
No, the debt service, the debt service is coming out of the T E F F, which is the bond that's being refinanced.
Yes.
So, uh, and also the proceeds, Senator, that are going, uh, uh, as a result of that, uh, that are gonna be supported by the additional funding in the refinancing. in the refinancing are also going, are also T E F F. They're labeled T E F F expenditures. So they don't belong in this pro forma. This is, this is a general fund pro forma to show the ability, our, uh, show, uh, give a snapshot of, uh, the government's financial condition as it relates to the general fund.
Okay. And how do we pay the T E F F? Where does the response come from, T E F F?
It's from real property taxes, which is also, which by law is, uh, directly deposited into the territorial, territorial education facilities fund.
Okay, okay. I can see a little bit clearer as to why it's not here. I appreciate it. Okay, but even at that, even at that, and looking at these figures, and I appreciate, and this, correct me if I'm wrong, this reflective of a, uh, the five percent? Or the, the, it is not reflective of the five percent?
It does not reflect the, uh, uh, the five percent that is proposed in chapter ten, is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, recognizing then that this does, this does not reflect the five percent. And, and, you know, ma'am, I know you for a long time too, and I know you can do this right off the top of your head, just give me your best guess on this, okay? Recognizing that this does not reflect the five percent, uh, cap.
You can add another two hundred million to the bottom line, if that's what you're looking for.
Then how do we make up for what we're gonna need to pay and spend? How much do we need in as far as revenue enhancements?
Well, you know, uh, are you talking about for the life of, um, for the life of the, as depicted here in the plan, or?
Okay, well, let's start with a, with a very, with a very near future. The proposal basically calls for us for next fiscal year. Okay? To reduce the spending authority, or basically, we cannot spend, we can only spend up to ninety-five percent of what we intend to bring in. Okay? Recognizing then, you know, that even if, first off, even if we bring in enhancements, enhancements won't take effect really until next fiscal year, right?
That's correct.
Okay? So, if we have to cut ninety-five percent of forty, I mean, I mean, five percent of, uh, of what we're gonna be authorized to spend next year, we're talking about twenty-four million? Almost twenty, almost twenty-five million. None of that is gonna be able to be made up by the revenue enhancement, so automatically, we're gonna have to cut by twenty-five, twenty-four million. Okay?
You know, for fiscal year two thousand eight, it appears, uh, from the pro forma, that it will be covered with, uh, on line seventy-five, you'll see a positive twenty-two point five million, which is the calculation that was given to me by our economist Gary Hiles on, uh, the multiplier of two hundred and fifty.
That's assuming, going back again, and going back to the discussion that we just had with the doctor, that's on the very presumptuous assumption that the whole two hundred and fifty million stays here.
No, no, there were some, where is Gary? Uh, no, we made adjustments for that. There were adjustments made. Uh, can I have Gary? He'll explain that.
Can you, Gary?
Yeah.
Explain?
Could you clarify, repeat your question? Then I'll try to explain it.
The multiplier, how did you get twenty-two point five million on?
Oh, sure. The first step is the proposed bond is two hundred fifty million. So we applied a multiplier of one point five, which gives, uh, three hundred seventy-five million. And then we made the assumption that not all of that would be spent on Guam.
What's your assumptions?
That twenty percent would go off island, or not be, would be saved. And so eighty percent would get spent in the economy, and then, uh...
Now, Gary, Mr. Gals, can you, can you qualify being spent? Because, you know, another thing that was interestingly brought up by the good doctor from the University of Guam, is that unfortunately, a lot of this is not new expense, it's basically catching up with old expense, so how is that new money? And admittedly, I mean, one of the things is we gotta recognize is, is, which is why we need to get this money. I'd love to get this money out there, is unfortunately, we've got some people who, who are relying on this money to pay off some past debt. Now, if they're gonna pay off some past debt, that's debt that's already in the books. That's not new money. Did you take that into consideration?
In some cases, it might be, in some cases, not be, might not be. If, if people pay the bills and companies reported as revenue, that would be, uh, business receipt, subject to tax.
Okay, does that affect?
The, uh, I can give you a little bit of background on the multiplier. We looked at the U.S. Department of Commerce, uh, under the regional input multipliers, uh, creates multipliers for the fifty states. They don't create multipliers for the territories. But we looked at, uh, multipliers for the state of Hawaii by industry, uh, expenditure multipliers. So expenditure multipliers look at if there is an expenditure in the economy, then how much that multiplies through the economy.
But Gary, when's the last time you went to Hawaii? When's the last time you've been to Hawaii?
La-last year.
Last year. Or was one of the very first stops you went to when you were in Hawaii?
The airport in Waikiki.
Waikiki, and there were some stores there that you went to because those stores aren't here, right?
That's true.
Yeah. So the propensity for that money to stay there is a lot greater than the propensity it is to stay here. Right?
Um, I would think generally the larger the economy, the higher the multiplier, because, in Hawaii, there would be some manufacturing there, so in some industries, the multiplier would be a little bit larger. The, the multipliers we looked at were, uh, often around, for the state of Hawaii, around two, in retail trade and hotels and things of that nature. The recent Global Insight Report for the Visitors Bureau, provides some numbers that would indicate that the multiplier in some tourism-related activities is around two. So I would think for Guam, a multiplier of one point five would be a reasonable estimate.
Okay, all right, okay. I can understand that now. And thanks. And so, Ms. Duane, I'll just ask a very pointed question here. How much worth of revenue enhancements do we need for this to be palatable, comfortable, marketable? You know, so that we can get the best rate possible for this two hundred fifty million dollar bond? How much, how much in revenue enhancements do we need?
Well, I wanna, to be on the safe side, Senator, I wanna go on record to support the governor's.
Sure, I know, I, I, yeah, I, we, Bertha, trust me, we know that.
Thirty point five million a year from now till whenever.
When? How much?
Thirty point five.
Thirty point five billion dollars additional that you're gonna need? And that, and just one last question, Mr. Chair.
We'll take that in many, in many, in as many forms and, and, uh, variables as you would like.
That's why I said, I said, that's why.
You mean any form?
That's why I clarified it, I said revenue enhancements.
Yes.
Okay?
We can, we can do a two percent G R T, we can do a one, we can do a combination.
Bertha, trust me, there is no denying, and there's no mistaking as to what your position is, and I appreciate that. That's why I can ask the question, because I know I'm gonna get a straight answer for that.
Finally, somebody got to the right question. Thank you.
So with that, and I'm gonna turn to Tina and to Senator Blas. Thirty point five additional revenues in revenue enhancements? This is what, I mean, is this all we're gonna need to make this marketable and the best, so that we can get the best product that we can?
Well, according to our financial advisor, and also in conjunction with the Governor Camacho's fiscal elimination, and, uh, I mean, fiscal recovery and deficit elimination plan, one of the components of this, this equation is, number one, we need to, uh, we need to, of course, address the accumulated deficit. And the other component is cost containment, or, or cost reduction, or revenue enhancements. Or maybe you said the other word, uh, lifting of exemptions according to the governor's plan. So these are, uh, part of the equation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Chair, what I surmise from the conversation that I just had is in order for this thing to go through, we're going to need twenty-five million dollars worth of reduction in government, in our government expenses today, I mean, for fiscal year, and thirty point, thirty million dollars in revenue enhancements. Total, okay, which is total, what, what, fifty?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five million dollars? Thank you.
All right. Uh, we are now beginning round two. Senator Calvo, you've recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, as a matter of fact, even if you put the, uh, increase the revenues to, in the tune of some sort of revenue enhancement by about thirty million dollars, it's nearly negated by the provision there for ninety-five percent. I, I do wanna note that as is, I've just done some quick calculations on the pro forma to add the, uh, the, uh, five percent reserve, two thousand and eight moving forward. So really, what you're looking at in, for two thousand and eight is a cumulative fund balance of about two hundred and seventy-six million rather than two fifty-one. Uh, for two thousand and nine, a cumulative deficit in the fund balance of three hundred and seventy-five million. In fiscal year two thousand and ten, it will be going up to four hundred and forty-seven million. And this is the deficit, the cumulative fund deficit. Uh, two thousand and eleven, about five hundred million. Two thousand and twelve, about five hundred and four million, uh, five hundred and fourteen million. Uh, two thousand and thirteen, about four hundred and seventy-five million. And, uh, two thousand and fourteen, about three hundred and eighty, eighty million on there. A little bit of statements were made earlier by a senator that, um, you know, we have to, we have to do something, we have to move forward to, to, to lower this deficit that we have. Based on the pro forma that we have in front of us, and the plan of action, then we are not coming any closer to dealing with our deficit all the way up to the year two thousand and fourteen. The, the issue I have, but, is the letter that was received, I'm gonna go back, you know, I'm, first of all, I wanna congratulate Senator Pangolinan, Senator Luhon, and all the legislature, all of the legislature in the twenty-ninth Guam legislature. We've made some attempt for fiscal responsibility. You know, in twenty-nine oh two and twenty-nine oh three, there were a lot of measures put in there. It puts, tightens the allotment controls. Uh, in fact, we have in this bill now, with what we've already passed in the refinance of the nineteen ninety-three bond, there is that two percent, uh, that is set aside for, uh, either promissory note or for paying vendor obligations. So there, there are movements we're making. Again, with the ninety-three bond, a refinance of the ninety-three bond, there is no increase in debt service, so you don't have to juggle your things, juggle things when it comes budgetarily. But, you know, yesterday, when Ali made the comment, and the reason why I'm congratulating you folks, my colleagues here, because we are making an attempt to make good in our obligations through either assignment of a GTA note, allowing for promissory notes, appropriating for special, from the special funds. Uh, of course, here, and if we pass this as is, without the, um, without the two hundred fifty million, there will be substantial chunk, forty million dollars, going to, um, paying some of these obligations, both on the tax refund and the COLA. But, you know, you also have to understand when we move forward, when we still have things in our control, moving forward and trying to incrementally reduce this, this deficit that's grown over many years, maybe wouldn't it be the wisest, most prudent thing to do? Sometimes if you take too big a bite of something, and you know, you need to eat, but sometimes you eat too much, you're either gonna choke or you're gonna get indigestion. And what my concern is, if we try to solve all the problems of the past immediately, will we solve the problem? Obviously, with the pro forma, we haven't. There's gonna have to be something. This letter, I know the senator says, whoa, you know, great, it's marketable. I'm even more afraid now than I was yesterday. Because when Ali said it was not marketable, and she did say it was not marketable, as is, at least I felt, okay. No harm, no foul. If we pass this budget bill, we gave it the old college try with this two, with this two hundred fifty million, but people are gonna look at this thing, investors, and say, heck no. I'm not gonna, we're not gonna buy it. Well, nothing happened. And we don't have to face the consequences. This letter, now, I am concerned. I am concerned because of what the statements that have been made here. Yes, it is marketable. But you know what that, that reminds me of? Every one of you seen a show on television called Dog the Bounty Hunter? Dog the Bounty Hunter, his second job is a bounty hunter. His main business, he's a, he's a bail bondsman. He gives out loans. He gives out loans for folks that have gotten arrested and don't wanna go to jail. So they'll put whatever up and pay whatever interest to ensure they don't go to jail. Now, the comparison I have here, this is not, the implications here, as we move forward, if it's this plan, this is not like going to Bank of Guam, or Bank of America, or Citigroup. This will be going to Dog the Bounty Hunter. And if there is anything that we do not, um, if we don't play by the rules of the Dog the Bounty Hunter, there is gonna be some tremendous consequences. And I've seen him tackle some of those folks that haven't paid, or have it, or jumped bond. Doctor, doctor, you mentioned about control. And the danger of something is when you lose control, and it is not in your control. We are moving forward incrementally, being very careful so far, in what we've done in the twenty-ninth Guam legislature, in trying to deal with our operating finances, and then dealing with this tremendous burden that has been put on us over the years, and is accumulated. But once we sign on the dotted line, in fact, not even once we sign the dotted line, once we pass this thing as is, then the game is new. Now, when the senator mentioned, oh, first of all, let's go back to the pro forma. Now, doctor, you mentioned the problems with having a long-term, I mean, a deficit of a magnitude for an extended period of time, and how would it affects a government and maybe a, and a community? So based on this pro forma now, from oh seven, all the way to oh, to four, two thousand and fourteen, so for the next seven years, we're gonna be at about, uh, pretty much around a half a billion dollars in, in, in a deficit situation. There, there minimal improvement. With that, what is the impact you, in, in, from your standpoint, on, on our island with this structural imbalance? And mind you, I want to tell you, show you something else. Obviously, when you take the tax increases out, make note of total revenues and total expenditures. So let's go two thousand and nine. We got four hundred, of course, you still have, you still had, you have the jump, the temporary jump on, on revenues as a result of the two hundred fifty million dollar bond indenture, and how it stimulates the economy. Doctor, first, look at those numbers. That's interesting. In the bottom of the first page, line thirty-four, thirty-five, you got in fiscal year two thousand and eight, there is income tax enhancement of the two hundred fifty million dollar bond for. for thirteen million, five-hundred thousand. And then on the GRTs of nine million. So total impact increase in revenues as a result of the bond is about twenty-two million, five-hundred thousand to the Government of Guam. Then the following year, fiscal year two thousand and nine, they're seeing again four million, five-hundred thousand for income tax, and three million on GRTs. Equals seven million, five-hundred. What is your, what are your thoughts on that? Is that, is that pretty much a good approximation? Is it hard? Would it be, I don't know whether, I know we don't have any details on this, but how they commit, but... You did say there's gonna be some stimulus to the economy. Maybe Bertha can answer that first, and then maybe Gary.
Could we just have Gary explain how we arrived, how he arrived at that?
Summarize it anyway, because it's interesting, I'm not saying, because there probably, there's gonna be a boost. I just want to get an idea what that boost is.
I just don't think we should put our economists in a duel here. I think that everyone's free to speak their minds.
Oh, sure.
You know, they're giving us their opinion.
Let me talk to, please, doctor, just your thoughts first.
Just, what's running through my mind right now is this fifty-five million annually. The thirty million in necessary revenue enhancements, and the twenty-five million in operation reduction. Fifty-five million annually, return on investment. For this bond, it's bringing you how much in revenues, in revenue enhancement?
Well, they're saying, they're saying the bond will stimulate
By twenty-two million?
By twenty-two million for oh-eight, twenty-two million.
That you're paying fifty-five million for it.
Okay, okay.
That's what I'm stuck on right now.
Sure, that's okay, and that's all I wanted to know, that's all I wanted to know. But, going through this, through, I want to go back to your question. Moving forward over the next eight, eight years, ten years, we see this, obviously, with the plan we have in front of us, that's the basis of the proposal to Wall Street for the two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond indenture. We're seeing this, again, triple-digit deficit extended out till, for, till two thousand and fourteen. How do you, what is your thought, what are your comments on the impact on this government, on this island and community, and this economy?
Certainly, if you're operating in a deficit, you're gonna have to take more of your revenues to offset that deficit. It just begins to escalate. What I'm looking at also is two thousand and fourteen, you begin to see some projection for turnaround, or two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, you see, you begin to see a fund balance surplus. But the impact of that, how many years do you have to carry forward of that kind of surplus to be in a position to balance and offset the deficit? So, we're looking at two thousand and fourteen of still carrying quite a sizable deficit. When do we get out of it?
You know, what I see here, obviously, once we make this commitment, we're stuck. And we're stuck for thirty years. I, what I'm concerned about, when you see for these next eight years, some of the commitments that we've made, like I said earlier, no harm, no foul. But, when you read on the second page of the letter by Bank of America Securities, one, two, three, four, in the fifth paragraph, as a matter of fact, the same paragraph which the earlier senator and the co-sponsor of this bill, this amendment, thought was good news, I see bad news. Obviously, it is marketable, because there are Dog the Bounty Hunters out there, and there are folks that are willing to lend money at a price. And aside from that, you know, again, the issues on the GRT that was brought up, we may have some major issues if we do anything on the GRT or a sales tax. Going back, I'm gonna complicate things, going back to what's stated here. "Under current market conditions, we believe the bonds can be marketed and sold under the bond structure and security contemplated by the proposed legislation." Of course, they love it, security, we got GRT. Of course, understanding the implications now, in the future, if the Tax Review Commission, which I will appoint in the absence of our current speaker, if they come up with a plan of action for maybe another tax structure, if we touch GRT, big, big, big concerns. However, and this is why I'm surprised, the senator did, he wrote, he said this earlier, and I'm surprised I didn't hit him. However, doing so without a plan in place to address ongoing deficits, as well as the additional debt service, will likely have negative credit implications. Negative credit implications. As financial advisor, Bank of America Securities does not recommend that the government issue deficit financing bonds and perform business as usual under its current budgetary projections. Any deficit financing transaction should have a plan in place that addresses ongoing deficit reduction and prevention of future deficits. Whether that plan is achieved through hard expenditure caps, and I remember Margaret telling me a few, a week or so ago at Bank of America Securities, Margaret didn't want to see any cuts in government spending, Bank of, at least, from her standpoint, she believed that we needed more teachers, more police officers, and more nurses. But, obviously, if you're not gonna do cuts, what do you do? Or additional revenue generation, or both. But that is a policy decision. Now, remember when Lieutenant Governor Mike Cruz put out a line of credit, and issued or used a line of credit to pay for the personnel costs at the Guam Public School System? The bells were rung. And when the bells rang, because everyone in Wall Street that has anything to do with Guam goes online and reads our PDN, or watches our television news, or our radio news, they know exactly what we're doing when we do it. If we were, and what happened? All of a sudden, credit watch. And remember the situation that put us into in the first place? We had the negative credit watch, the governor calls us into special emergency, I don't know if it was emergency or special session, but all hell was broken loose, broken loose because of one act. Now... Oh, yeah, obviously, okay. It was, it didn't come from us, but I'm not here to point fingers, I'm just saying, we gotta be very careful, because this, if we do something here now, it, we will be the ones to get the lights going. Because you know what I fear? If we pass this thing as is, this two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar borrowing indenture, we pass it and mandate, this is the policy of the legislature, and the governor signs it, and he probably won't sign it, because this is what he wanted. And you send out with that bond, and when you go to Gold Market there, and Margaret and Ali come back, and you give them this thing, and I've showed you, we have to make corrections on it, but the corrections aren't gonna make it look any prettier. When these folks see us passing a bill into law, saying that we're gonna borrow, and we're gonna borrow based on this plan, I have a strong feeling that other bells will ring. And again, as Bank of America Security Services says, likely negative credit implications. We are right now at single B? What are we, Tina? Single B? Tony? Single B? This... I said it was a folly yesterday. I meant as a folly is because, again, no harm, no foul. It's a folly because we wasted a lot of time, but in the end, no one got hurt. Unfortunately, a promise was made to maybe some of our, to our people that are most needy, that they're gonna get something. But, heck, no one's gonna buy this thing. Now, we know, there's gonna be someone to buy it, it'll be Dog the Bounty Hunter. But, even before Dog the Bounty Hunter buys it, the bells would have rang, credit watch will occur, and I don't know how we're gonna explain it, other than saying, or maybe the author of the amendment will now have to introduce a bill to raise taxes. And it'll be an emergency, 'cause I guarantee ya, once we're in that credit watch. You gotta be kidding, ladies and gentlemen from Guam? This is your deficit elimination plan? We are playing with fire. We are playing with fire. When I read this letter, and I'm asking my colleagues, reconsider. We can help the COLA recipients. We can help, we can help those folks that wants their tax, and that needs their tax refunds. We can work down this deficit. But let's not bite off more than what we can chew, and let's stay in control of our, of our own destiny. Because if we do pass it as is, in fact, I don't even know what you can do to change this thing, to make it any better, or any, any better. It may, it just may be, this thing just may be bad, period. My colleagues, I'm gonna close by, by, by just, please, please, and I'm pleading with all of you here, let's take the rhetoric out, let's just base it on numbers, and on the statements that are made by the experts. Let's not make a mistake that could be terminal, I am just so... At this point, my concerns are that that we are sowing the seeds of our own destruction with the movement of this particular bill. Thank you.
Senator, especially you, you've recognized, then we'll go to Senator Espada.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. You know, Ms. Chairman, a lot is being said about what we shouldn't do, and there's not that much being said about what we should be doing. We're hearing a long dissertation about if this is marketable, as the Bank of America Securities claim, that it'll only be marketable to Dog the Bounty Hunter. I'm not sure what the previous speaker was talking about, because in this proposal, it's very clear that there's a seven-point-five percent cap, that if this can't go out and secure that kind of interest, then it can't be, it cannot be effectuated. We're hearing a long dissertation about how we should not be playing with fire when our financial house is engulfed in flames. You know, I would appreciate those kind of comments if we had an operating deficit of about a hundred million dollars, which our Government of Guam people have said, that's manageable. But when you have an operating, a deficit that exceeds your annual operating budget, your financial house is engulfed in flames, if not already burned down. You know, if we're to follow the logic of the previous speaker, then why don't we just pass the law right now? And say that the Governor of Guam shall not pay for those tax refunds. The Governor of Guam shall not recognize those court-ordered COLA, and our job is done. Let's also balance, let's also pass a bill, which we've always been doing, to say, this is a balanced budget. It's a balanced budget, because I said it's a balanced budget. But when you look at the details, when you get the information and the financial data, and when all is said and done, we recognize, at least some of us in this whole, who's at least generated this kind of discussion, because if anything, Ms. Chairman, I think so far, this has been productive. It's been productive, because it's flushed out the fact that we have, we no longer have the luxury of saying, let's deal with this later, let's deal with this incrementally. Let's pay twenty million dollars a year to the court-ordered COLA, and to the tax refund, and we'll pay that for forty years, let's just do that. Let's just do that. And then now, after we hear a long speech from the previous speaker, he closes by saying, let's stop the rhetoric and deal with the facts. Let's deal with the facts now, Ms. Chairman. And the fact remains is, we have a audited deficit, which has obviously increased, about five-hundred-and-twenty-four million dollars. We have a debt of about one billion dollars. And it took a very, I've been in this legislature for about six years now, maybe, yeah, five and a half. It took my entire term so far to get to this juncture. When former Senator B.J. Cruz first talked about how our annual, our overall cumulative debt is about a billion dollars, other people who did not want to recognize that said, what a big joke. And then two years later, we've come to the juncture where even the public auditor is recognizing a five-hundred-and-twenty-four-million-dollar deficit, which does not include the three-hundred-and-thirty-million dollars in the general obligation bonds, which does not include the money to close or dump and open up a new landfill in La Jana, which is purported to be two-hundred-and-twenty-nine million dollars, which does not include other obligations, which does not include the one-point-two-billion-dollar unfunded liability of the retirement fund. So let's just say, pass a law and say, the Governor of Guam is not gonna recognize the unfunded liability of the retirement fund. Then our job is done. Because if we're gonna continue to say, let's not, let's not play with fire and not recognize the kind of situation the Government of Guam is in financially, and that's just the same thing as passing laws to say, we're not gonna recognize this debt. This two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars, whether we like it or not, is a debt of the Government of Guam, which we have to figure out how to pay it. And what causes me to pay very close attention, and I feel very nauseated right now, because, you know, I mean, the discussions go back and forth, but when I hear that there's other ways to address this, but I'm not hearing the details, when we know that we've introduced a bill to outsource the tax collections, they do it in other jurisdictions, it's something that the IRS, Congress authorized the IRS to do, and sure, there are problems with that over the years, but we've, we've recommended to adopt those corrective actions. Why don't we try those kinds of things, Ms. Chairman? It can't be business as usual, and say, we're just gonna address it incrementally. We started to take those steps in twenty-nine oh-two. You know what was also in twenty-nine oh-two? To convene the Special Economic Services Group, to put the experts together, Dr. Jones and others, to do a five-year economic forecast. You know how long it took before the first meeting convened? They didn't have a second meeting. The other thing in twenty-nine oh-two was to impanel the Special Accounting Services Group to have realistic revenue projections, to take the politicians away, elected or appointed, from doing the revenue forecast, so that way, the Office of Finance and Budget can adopt those realistic revenue projections based on the current trends, based on how you project for those things, and not based on determining after the expenditure requirements have been determined. That's how we've always been doing things, and the fact that there's, there's no serious, we're not short of solutions. Believe me, we're not short of solutions. And when this bill was introduced, there was no accompanying revenue enhancements, because we believed that revenue enhancements such as raising taxes and fees were not necessary if we just go after the monies that's owed the Government of Guam. Collect the money that the Government of Guam is owed. We believe in readdressing the current tax structure of how the real estate taxes are assessed, or do it in other jurisdictions. The governor's proposal would have essentially doubled the property taxes right now. We didn't agree with that, but we just can't keep saying no, can we? So we had a solution, which has not even had a public hearing, Mr. Chairman, to freeze the current tax structure for property taxes in perpetuity. And every time that property is sold, you'd assess one percent of the sale, plus one percent of any improvements, as the current tax structure for that property going forward. And so eventually, it'll catch itself up, so that the value of that property, the way those properties are taxed will be based on the market value, and you would do that incrementally. We've seen some property transactions right now, that are going for thirty-five million dollars. If this law were in place, you would have an annual property tax assessed at three-hundred-and-fifty thousand versus five, six thousand dollars that is already currently. And that would also force people who are buying these properties to hurry up and improve the property, so they can generate income to afford that current property tax structure. It also protects those who have ancestral lands, or huge, huge tracts of land that they inherited, that they would not have to sell their property just to pay their taxes. I mean, these are things that we've been putting out, but for some reason or another... but for some reason or another, are not being addressed, and they're all in one committee. There's also the proposal to move, uh, individuals who are 65 or older from, uh, the GovGuam Health Insurance Program to Medicare A&amp;B. The retirement fund said that there are 400 people that are eligible right now. Can you imagine if we take those people off the government of Guam Health Insurance Program? How that would lessen the burden overall in terms of the rate structure and, and the cost for carrying our retirees? Ms. Chairman, so when someone argues that all we do is put out ideas and proposals and have, uh, what'd you say, shallow victories, it's not even what we're talking about. We're talking about putting out solid proposals which have other components, which have not made its way through the normal course of the legislative process. And so, I mean, we're hoping to address these things holistically. Unfortunately, we're not in charge, we don't have the majority now. And, and, and that's why it's very difficult to address these things all at one time. But if you look at all the pieces that we've introduced, you certainly find a very nice puzzle, which would help to, uh, ensure some kind of, uh, economic, uh, activity in years to come. This pro forma, that, um, and I'll close by asking the BBMR Director. Does this pro forma include, um, the monies that are to be set aside from the, then, from the Deficit Elimination Fund? Because there's talk that there's a 5% set aside, you know, that 5% doesn't disappear. That 5% set aside, if that's the will of the body, I'm saying it could go lower than that. I know there's recommendations to make it 2%. That, that, whatever that percentage of set aside is, wouldn't that go down to paying the deficit? So that if, if those monies were booked back, we'd probably see a, uh, a, a better picture in 2014 than, than what is being presented right now?
I'm sorry, specific to, um, to the pro forma? What, what was your question?
Does your pro forma include, um, the set aside for the Deficit Elimination Fund?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
Okay, but if it did, and the, and the set aside-
Yes, there, uh, may, may, may I qualify, uh, that, that, uh, statement? It does address the deficit elimination, um, uh, the rather, the set aside for the EITC settlement is a form of, of deficit elimination. I mean, it's, the EITC, uh, a rearage, which is, uh, a part of the pro forma, is reducing the deficit, 'cause that's part of the $524 million.
But the 2% set aside?
Senator Raspicio?
The 2% set aside that would be required, I think, in the $90 million bond version?
No, the 2% is not applicable to this pro forma, because this is a general fund pro forma. The 2% is applicable to the territorial-
But in, in- In this version, the 5%-
Excuse me, Senator. Um, the gentlelady will have to be leaving the economist, so if you have any questions you wanted to ask her, uh, in the time remaining in your questions, could you do so now?
No, I just wanna thank, um, Dr. Jones for providing us some very objective, uh, guidance. And now, you're right, we have to proceed with caution.
Yeah, before she leaves, is there's any other questions? Could you please just-
That's why I'm kinda disappointed that we're doing all the talking and we're not asking any questions.
Let's go to Senator Espada, and then go to Senator Pangalena. One question each.
Thank you. You know, actually, after you got this, Dr. Jones, I, I've, I've been watching you, had you sat up there, and you know, you've been wincing, and you've been, you know, I know going through all kinds of analysis in your own mind. And you've been writing a lot of notes on the side and this and that. I mean, my question is, what are your thoughts? After, after you've seen this, and you've noted the discussion that's been before us, just about where you've, before you're ready to leave, at this time, what are your thoughts now?
One of the notes that I made for myself is, um, when you're talking $1 billion in debt, you're talking 1/3 of Guam's GDP is debt. And, and I'm troubled by that. And there are no easy answers. And I also look at, if, if you go down a particular path, what's the return on your investment? Would it be? There's some cost in borrowing. What are your other options? And, and it's not for me to say what those other options are. It, it sparked my interest to think about what those other options are. And when I hear the senators talk about we need more than one person to kind of think about this before it comes to this floor and, and if things get framed, I wish I could help, um, with some advanced thinking, with some colleagues, and, and have that policy center, so that we could actually begin to bring in my network of colleagues to look at this. There are some answers out there. It, it's just very hard to, to deal with in, in this particular environment. So the notes are there. And there's more that I would like to be able to do with the resources that I have and colleagues that I have. And it just takes time, and, and I'm grateful to hear all of this. But, but, uh, some more planned thought before you go forward.
I, I appreciate that, Doctor. Thank you.
Okay, one question, Senator Pangalena?
Just, uh, one quick question, Dr. Jones. When you compare the, the borrowing costs and, and walking down that path as one way of resolving the issue of trying to, uh, get rid of our deficit, and you take a look at the other side of way of, which is increasing the resources to deal with that deficit, the tax increase, which, in our current situation, our economy, understanding that, uh, an increase in, in taxes may not pay off the, the debt immediately, which is, you know, that, that's the apple and the orange. One pays it off, and then you, you amortize it, uh, in terms of the benefit to the people. But the benefit to the government is the, is the same, you have a reduction in your deficit. What are your thoughts with regards to the effect on the economy, and which one is, is less of a, um, is the lesser of two evils, maybe you might wanna call it? Borrowing, uh, borrowing in this manner, as proposed in this bill, or any other manner of debt versus increasing your revenues and then amortizing the payment of the, that deficit with the increase in the revenue? A 1% GRT increase, for example, yield according to our current, uh, projections, our GRT almost $40 million. You know? So, in five years, we could pay $200 million, and we won't have the 30-year amortization of that debt. So, but then it also have the effect of sucking resources out of the economy. And, and out of, you know, and so forth. But knowing, knowing that, which I'm sure you do, which, which one would be the lesser of evil and would help us gain ground faster with regards to solving our problems and building a new economy?
Um, again, this, these are complex things. One of the things that economists like to do are, are build those kinds of scenarios, those what-if options. And, and when they come to the table, they have a sense of what will work in a certain economic environment, and what, what are the pluses and minuses? And you're missing a lot of that now. Personally, my personal, professional, um, impression is it's important that governments remain solvent, remain strong, keep their options open for the future, keep their decisions in, in place, and the power of that. You have the power to raise taxes. Not that anyone likes that, believe me. But I'm not sure that, given this bond proposal, that it's not a tax, it's gonna force you to tax, um, for, for them, for an outside purpose. So one way or another, it looks like you're going to have to grow revenue. And you're gonna have to grow revenue by using your power to raise taxes. And one way is, you decide to do it yourself, and, and how you're gonna do it, and how you're gonna finance your obligations. Or you turn that to someone else, and then they say, well, you're gonna have to tax, and this is the, this is how much you're gonna have to tax to pay us back. And again, it's very complicated. What I hear Senator Raspicio saying is the built-in powers of the legislation say that it protects the politics of it, so that it doesn't erode into, well, maybe we won't get to that in the future. What I'd like to see for the government of Guam is to, to lead, um, with, with keeping its power intact, exercising its power, um, to raise taxes, if that's what needs be, need be, and, and then call the shots as to how you want to allocate that money. And as I, as I see the deficit growing, I see your options are diminishing. The more you're in debt to someone else, the fewer options you have. And so protect your options. And, and again, I would love to, to have that, that opportunity to work with others and, and build those scenarios for us, that I'm not doing this on the fly. It doesn't make me feel comfortable to do this. And this, this has gotten to be a very important time in, in this economy. We need to get it right, or as right as we can.
Uh, Doctor, if I may, I mean, if we, you know, if, if we followed your line of thinking, do we have that talent on island? I mean, in other words, to get around, to get together with colleagues, uh, that you have, is, are they on island? To form a think tank for us? I mean, if we, if we go down that road?
You know, I, I think, I, I think we often underestimate the talent that is on island, and the talent that is on island is that we live this. We understand this better than anyone. When I've seen talent come from off-island, yeah, they might have some ideas, but they don't fit here. So, the expertise here has a, a natural sensitivity to what can work, what can't work. But matched with other people who, maybe perhaps from the Virgin Islands, I'd like to see what their plan was. If it worked so well, what does it look like? Um, and I think we, we could tap into those resources. So I think it's a match of some local expertise, um, and matched with others that we can network with.
Yeah, just one quick note, the, the one element that everybody never says about the Virgin Island successes, it involved a $200 million forgiveness in federal debt. So, they're, they're, they're not this great magic over there. It's like, $200 million was forgiven by the federal government, they never had, never had to pay that back.
Senator Garth, Senator Calvo, on the last question for the economists. And by the way, Ms. Jones, thanks for indulging the final questions of our colleagues.
Ms. Chairman, I just wanna say that we're very fortunate to have this talent before us. Dr. Jones, also Dr. Heils, these folks, you know, they have a lot of experience and understanding of how the Guam economy works. They've been studying it for a long time. I just wanna make one point, though, if I may, that, uh, in February of this year, this legislature convened to develop a supplemental 07 budget. In that budget was included a provision that I authored, that mandated the convening of the Guam Tax Commission with specific duties and responsibilities to report back to this legislature by September 1st with some preliminary evaluation of what Dr. Jones was talking about. That was in doubt. Again, I raised the question when we started this particular session about what happened to the Guam Tax Commission. And we even had provisions in this budget bill that, again, dresses it. I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, that I want to implore my colleagues, especially our acting speaker, because the law requires the acting speaker to convene the Guam Tax Commission, to please get on the ball and do that. We have wasted a month already here with the 08 budget, and still no convening of the Guam Tax Commission. Mr. Chairman, the talent that Dr. Jones spoke of should be part of that commission, including Dr. Jones, Dr. Heils, and others. May I ask the Chair to please assist in convincing our good Speaker to convene the Guam Tax Commission immediately? Thank you.
Yeah. Do, do you have any questions for the lady?
That's my deepest appreciation.
All right. Uh, I also wanna thank you very much, um, ma'am, for making your presence here and your, your knowledge available to us. Uh, we're gonna take a few minutes break, and we'll come back. Committee of Holes in recess. The Committee of the Hole is back in order. Um, we are going to recess until 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. Good evening, everyone.